All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this a regular meeting of Tuesday, August 20, 2013, of the Stillwater Planning Commission to order. First item on the agenda is we have a new member down here at the end, Lori Crosby. Glad you're here, Lori, and would you like to maybe tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Hi, I'm very excited. I've lived in Stillwater for seventeen years. I'm married to a retired United States Army veteran. I have five kids, two of them are also Army men, one lives in Germany, and two granddaughters. I'm the owner-operator of the Renaissance Schools, been for seventeen years, and Tan and Tonin Limited here in Stillwater. And I absolutely love this city, and I'm very excited about this. If everybody will bear with me, I'm just very excited to be here.
All right, well, thanks, Lori. It's good to have you aboard.
Thank you.
And appreciate your willingness to serve on this board as well as everybody. It takes folks like all of us, I guess, to make our town a little better place, so appreciate it. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, I guess, we have our elections tonight. We have an election of chair and election of vice chair. We'll go ahead and start with motions for chair.
I move, or I would like to nominate, move, I don't know what the appropriate language is.
That'll be fine, dude.
Okay, Trey McKeon to be the chair of the planning commission.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Trey McKeon to be elected chair of the planning commission. Are we ready to vote, Cindy?
You guys are.
Okay, let's go ahead and place our votes. Okay, it looks like that's approved with six yeses, and what was that, no choice? That's a new one on me.
Did somebody not push? Somebody's block still lit up?
Somebody's block's still blinking? Yours is.
Mine don't count.
They're all lit.
Oh, mine's messed up.
The chair does that one, because it's his job.
That's, I'll second that.
I would ver- if that's me, I would verbally agree yes.
So we have a unanimous yes for Mr. McKeon as chair?
We do.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and then open up for election of vice chair, and I'd like to make the nomination of David Barth as vice chair.
A second?
Motion a second for David Barth as vice chair. We'll reset here. Everybody hang on just a second.
I'm on line, Mr. ...
Tell us when, Cindy.
Trying to get your seat so I can vote.
A little technical difficulty, please bear with us.
Well, let me put you online, so we may take your ... Let everybody else vote and take Rusty's verbally.
Okay.
Hey, it took it.
Okay, that's unanimous with David Barth as a vice chair. And so with that, Chairman McKeon, I'll pass the gamble.
Hit the ground running. Thought I got one more night off.
No, afraid not. Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, well, we'll go, just real quick, there's looked like a couple people in the audience that don't work for the city of Stillwater, so we'll go ahead and give a little rundown of kind of how the meeting goes this evening, if you're not familiar with it. But at this time, we'll have a, the applicant or the item will come up for, to hear for the evening. Staff will come up and give their report and findings, what they found about that. We'll open that up after staff, the commission has a chance to ask staff any questions, then we'll open it up to anyone who is in favor of the proposal this evening. So we'll give anyone that is in favor of the proposal an opportunity to speak, have any questions answered if they won't. After that, then we'll have anyone that is in opposition or proposes the item this evening, they'll have an opportunity, maybe even just have some questions about it, maybe you're not in opposition, but you have questions, you can step forward at that point, ask staff or the commissioners questions you may have after that. Then the city staff will come back up and present their alternatives on how we'll vote for the evening. And then we, as commissioners, are a recommending body for the city council. So whether the item tonight is approved or not approved, it still will go on to city council. It's set for September 5th, see if that happens, but that is kind of how things will run down. So we want to be sure and give everyone an opportunity that wants to speak, an opportunity to speak tonight. So at this time, we'll ask, we're going to hear, "Project Builders Preliminary Plan Development, PZ .13 .1768, requesting review and approval to rezone properties addressed as 1400 North Boomer Road, 601 West Bennett Drive, 1298 North Knoblock Street, from CG Commercial General, an RTM residential two-family and multifamily, to RMI PUD, residential multifamily intermediate with planned unit development, district to allow redevelopment of this area for a multifamily apartment complex." Mr. Coates?
Okay, this is a map showing the properties surrounded in red. The project consists of actually three different property owners. The, now it's Magnolia Point Apartments Complex, and then two properties, one in the north and one to the south of that project. Together, all these properties are 11.68 acres. As you stated, the request is to rezone from the CG, General Commercial, to the, and to RTM, residential two-family, multifamily, to the RMI, residential multifamily intermediate, PUD, planned unit development. Property is surrounded in the north by the CG Commercial General District, to the east by the CS, Commercial Shopping, the public, and the Commercial General District, and then at the south by the RTM, residential two-family and multifamily district, and to the west by the P, Public District, and RSS, residential small lot, single family. Also point out while we're on this vicinity map, the blue is Will Rogers Park and Will Rogers School down to the south. The project consists of 156 units. These are four-bedroom units. That's a total of 624 bedrooms. The proposed building height is 55 feet, eight inches. The RMI district ordinarily allows for 50 feet, so that is a request that's being asked for with this PUD, is to increase building height. The proposed density is 13.36 units per acre. The RMI district allows for up to 30 units per acre. The proposed parking, they're proposing 624 parking spaces, 507 is all that's actually required. Proposing 200 bicycle spaces, 195 is what's actually required. On the site plan, we've got up here, we can see we've got the buildings are the black areas, we've got some of the parking lots are the gray areas. Proposing access off of Moore Avenue, and access off of Boomer Road across from the stoplight at Franklin, accesses off of Bennett Avenue, and one access off of Knoblock Street. The notice also on this plan, I've got the, some proposed retaining walls in red, we're going to talk about those again in a minute. The proposing landscaping throughout the development, and specifically, there, other than the vegetation that's existing in the floodway, that's, we'll talk about in a minute, no existing landscaping or existing vegetation is proposed to remain. In review of this request, staff had some particular concerns at the northwest corner of the development, so I'm highlighting with the mouse, next to 803 West Moore. I've tried to contact the property owner, they've, would have gotten the notices for this meeting, maybe they're here tonight. I tried to contact them by phone and in person. In review of this request, we feel that they would be potentially most impacted, because the plan proposes basically right adjacent to the house, a very steep wall, removal of all existing vegetation, and then 15 feet from the house, the parking lot, the most revised plan does provide for a screening wall now. Just wanted to, our concern is we want to make sure that the, that property owner is okay with the proposal. As of right now, we haven't, I haven't been able to speak with them. At the sketch PUD phase, it was proposed that a trail would connect in with, from this property to the, to OSU, some way or another, so that people would have a direct connection for biking or walking to OSU, since this is a student-oriented type development. The applicant's representative has met with OSU, but the specifics on that are not proposed with this PUD application that we have before us. Hopefully, our engineer can give us a little bit more details about that, but right, as of right now, it's not proposed. This is a color rendering of, that you saw with the sketch PUD phase of the planned buildings, four-story tall building. This is the site plan with the floodplain superimposed on it. The dark blue in sort of the center of the flood area, darkest blue is the floodway. The lighter blue next to the dark blue is the 100-year floodplain, and then the lightest, it didn't really show up so well on that TV, but there's a lightest color around it for a 500-year floodplain. I've got the retaining walls, again, highlighted specifically. These retaining walls, they're proposed with this development, are proposed to be over 15 feet high in places. They're proposed to be right adjacent to the floodway and in, within the 100-year floodplain. The preliminary drainage study that was submitted was incomplete in providing enough information for staff to be able to evaluate the project as to whether or not it had an adverse impact on the flood hazard areas which this project is being built adjacent to. Staff would need more information to determine if there would be a negative impact, and specifically, if a negative impact is identified, that there is potential that that could impact how the site plan could be laid out, because if you have to take out parking spaces, do major changes to the grading, that could change the layout of the whole project. Okay, staff findings include that the PUD appears to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is very proximate to OSU, so multifamily seems appropriate within that neighborhood. Although the comprehensive plan did specifically identify it as being appropriate for commercial, it's a, it's a guide, and since they're proposing multifamily, we'll get our commercial in that neighborhood as well. The development intensity is less than the RMI, what the RMI district would normally allow. Once again, it's, they're proposing 13.36 units per acre versus what would normally be allowed in the RMI district of 30 units per acre. The floodplain and floodway hazard areas are located on the property. Preliminary drainage study has been submitted, and additional information is needed to determine the impacts to the flood hazard areas, which could also, once again, impact the site plan. A traffic impact analysis would be required prior to the development. This development comes really close, it is whether or not it would be required. Just to remind you, anything that generates over 1,000 trips per day requires a traffic impact analysis. Due to concerns that we heard from the neighbors at the neighborhood meeting on traffic, and we also heard concerns about the flooding and whatnot, drainage, would recommend that, just to make sure the traffic impact analysis gets done to determine the impact of Moore and Boomer specifically, that we make it a requirement to the PUD, just to make sure that it for sure gets done with this project. With that, do you have any questions for me?
I actually need to make an announcement, I forgot to, Trey. I actually wanted to let everybody know that I do own property within 1,000 feet of this site. I just forgot to mention it before we got started, so.
Any questions for Tom?
Trey. Has there been any discussion, Tom, about going to one site only, more park, more street parking on Moore up there? I was driving through there last night, and it was, it's a little...
That was a concern of the neighbors at the neighborhood meeting. It's a little, not really related to this particular request. It's, that's something that the transportation department would need to review and decide on. We'll say that the more, if you have on-street parking like that, it makes it so that it becomes less of a desired route to take as a shortcut. Throw that out there, but that's...
The more, the merrier.
I had a question, Trey. Tom, you had mentioned that the house on Moore, I guess, the one that you feel like is most advert- adversely impacted, or impacted, I guess, maybe not adversely, by this. I was looking at this, is the property line for this cut through that house?
Yes, it does currently.
Okay, just double check.
Is that house a rental, or is it owned by an occupant?
I, I wasn't able to contact the owner. According to the, the property ownership records, the taxing address is the same as the house. That usually means that it's an owner-occupied unit.
So the floodplain requirements are for a zero-foot rise? Is that a correct statement?
Yes, no adverse impact, so that would be zero increase.
Is there a compensatory storage requirement?
When you fill any area of the 100-year floodplain, there is requirement for compensatory storage to help make up for that, as well as review for any adverse impact.
Thank you.
Is that adverse impact upstream and downstream?
Yes.
Any more questions for Tom? Okay, thank you, Tom. At this time, we would like to invite anyone that would like to speak in favor. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
Good evening. Kelly Harris at 923 South Lowry, here representing the developer tonight, who does have a representative here, Brett Callahan is here, and then also Larry Brown is here as their real estate agent, and they can answer questions if you drag them up here. Tom did a great job in overview of the project. I do want to just point out a few things about the site plan. This is just a general site plan. Again, the proposed buildings are in the bold black lines. We are proposing three apartment buildings. They're, all three are four-story buildings. They are all four-bedroom units. This central one is the clubhouse, it's a one-story building, and then...
Can I get you to speak a little closer to the microphone?
Yes, ma'am. There's actually a two-story maintenance building down here on the south end. The two-story is so that they have room for a garage and then some offices on the second floor, I believe. And then we also have two central dumpster locations. This is where the residents will put their trash, and then the internal maintenance staff will take that to the central compactor on-site, where it'd be compacted and then be picked up by the city trash. That's kind of the general layout. We have the bike parking spread out throughout, there's some bike parking at each building. This, this black building is the existing Domino's building, just to kind of orient you right there, that is planning on staying at this current time, so we do plan on increasing their business. But the entrances at, here by the clubhouse, this is the main entrance, and we are planning on using that existing signalized intersection there, and we've lined it up with that in mind. Then we have the two entrances off Bennett here. The existing apartments already take access off of Bennett on both sides, so these two accesses, while they have been shifted on Bennett, they've, they've been there all along. We've got a south, my pointer keeps going away, a south exit and entrance here along Knoblock, and then the north one along Moore. Now, the existing apartments utilized the central land area pretty much right here, so there was not a previous exit and entrance on the Knoblock, and there was not a previous one onto Moore. Those are two vacant tracks at this current time. So with that kind of full project picture, I'll kind of jump to the concerns that were brought up in the city staff's comments, and then from the residents as well. We actually ran into the owner, Brett did today, the owner of that property there on Moore. And the owner is elderly, so he talked to the son, but she's broken her ankle, so she's since moved to a recovery facility, so that's, I think, why Tom's been having a hard time getting a hold of her. They didn't have any concerns about the project, not really, any was brought up. I think really, they may be looking at selling the house, honestly, but they didn't have any concerns about the development. Well, I'll talk about the sidewalk connection, I'll follow my script, jumping around. So the sidewalk connection that was brought up during the sketch phase through OSU, we did meet with OSU staff and city staff about that, and it looks like the path along Knoblock will be the cleanest route if we just continue south. Looks like the future plans for the Athletic Village will have that corridor remain open through their property. And so our plan for this project is to continue the sidewalk that we have, that we're required to put in front of our site, on down to the intersection of Knoblock and Eskridge at this current time. For stormwater, we realize that we still have some work to do on the stormwater requirements, getting the preliminary drainage study accepted by city staff. We're not asking for any relief from code requirements. We are, are working with city staff to get that preliminary study accepted before it's a city council meeting. Our, our goal on that would be to, they basically asked for more information to be shown on the preliminary grading plan to verify what we've shown in the drainage study, and so we have every intention on getting them that, and in time for them to review and approve it before the city council meeting. Now I'll get to traffic. Traffic is a concern onto Moore, since the existing apartment complex doesn't take access to Moore, so any traffic that they see would be an increase from what they're seeing now. I'm not going to put that any different way, I know that's true. And I also know that the residents leaving this site will go either right or left. Washington to the left is a main entrance into the campus, so if they're going to college or anywhere that side of town, they're going to make a left and go down the majority of Moore versus making a right and going out to Bennett, or Boomer. Like you said, there is parking going on now with residents parking on both sides of the street. I will say that that road's only 24 foot wide, which doesn't really allow for parking, so the cars traveling down the street are really having to weave in and out, but we are providing more than the required number of parking spaces on-site. There's one per bed right now, and the developers have already said that they, they don't want the residents parking on the streets in the neighborhood, and so they will be educating them to that effect. Really, the only other thing that we could do is to install the street signs for the city, saying that there's no parking on those streets, but it would still be up to city police to, to regulate that and enforce it. We have had the preliminary traffic study done, I got those results last week. It looks like the, the level of service on Moore, and actually Bennett as well, is a level of service of B, which is very good. That means that there's hardly any wait time at those intersections as you're getting onto Moore and Bennett, or Boomer, I keep saying Bennett. So as far as the traffic study goes, it still says that that signal at Boomer, the main entrance to the site, is a level of service A, so we've got excellent traffic infrastructure in place. It's just some of them like Moore and Bennett. Bennett also has parking on both sides of the street. I think there's probably more home occupied, homeowner occupied homes along Bennett, so there may be fewer cars parked on the street, but there are still some there.
I hate to interrupt you...
Go ahead, no.
But currently on Bennett, where the Magnolia Point, there is no parking on the south side, is that correct? But that's in the...
Yes.
Apartment part of that. Do you guys plan on keeping that, or are you kind of open to...
We are not planning on any parking on the public streets.
So the no parking signs that are there will just, I mean, obviously, they'll get taken down probably during construction, but...
Well, that's a city decision.
Yeah, yeah, that's the city.
They better not take them down.
So you can't take anything?
No.
Well, yeah, but, but you, you don't have a plan, you'll just keep it the way it is?
Yeah.
Asking for one way or the other?
Yeah, all we're planning to do on Bennett is to close the existing curb openings from where the existing drives are and shift them to our new locations.
Because it made it nice, when I drove over there today, there was no one parking on the whole south side of it.
Oh, yeah.
But, and it made it pretty easy access to get in and out. I don't know if that's a traffic study, will kind of help alleviate that too, but, okay, thank you.
We don't plan on changing that, and you can interrupt me at any time.
We don't want you to get off your script.
I know. I got it, I got my finger on the place here. But overall, I think this is a great fit for this area. There's already an existing apartment complex there, we're going to be providing the infill in the surrounding vacant tracks, with the long-term plans of OSU and the high school. I just, I see more and more development and improvement going on in this side of town, and I'm just excited to see it happening over there. What questions do you have?
I had one, Kelly. As far as, I know it's still early, but where are you proposing detention? Are you doing that in the parking lot, or is there a...
So our plan for detention and compensatory storage is to capture, all the buildings will have downspouts, we'll be capturing those in private storm sewer throughout the site, and piping them to underground detention in the parking lots. We have to keep the actual detention system separate from the compensatory storage. We can't share those volumes. So we're providing the underground detention in the parking lots up, up the hill, so they'll be, they'll still be along the west side, but they'll be sporadically through there. So the drive aisles, what rain, of course, falls on the drive aisles, that will be directed to inlets in those areas, and then we'll have the storm sewer directing the, the building runoff to those areas. So then from the underground detention pipes, we'll, of course, release at the slower right into the creek, which is where it all drains currently. And then our plan for the retaining walls is those will, the bottom of the walls will go down to the floodway elevation, and we'll be providing the compensatory storage along that west property line. So we...
I didn't completely grasp that statement. So the retaining walls will go down, and you're going to excavate?
Yes.
So you're lowering the...
We won't excavate lower past the floodway elevation, but we will excavate the volume that is above that, and that will provide the volume, the offset volume.
You're taking cubic yard of dirt out of one part of the floodplain and put another part of the floodplain behind the retaining wall?
Correct.
Okay, wait a minute, sorry. So I'm looking at the picture, the red line is the retaining wall?
Yes.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
So on the, on the downstream side of the retaining wall is where you're taking, excavating?
We're, we're cutting earth on that side.
At that scale, it is difficult for me to understand that you can do that, but I think the key in my mind is your statement, that you're going to get this approved by staff before it goes to the city council, and I'm going to highly recommend that we have that in our motion, that if we approve this, it's contingent upon that being approved.
I would strongly agree.
How do you, how close do you feel? I mean, obviously, when staff in their presentation, the majority of it was drainage.
Mm-hmm.
How close do you feel that you are? I mean, September 5th is going to be here pretty quick.
I feel with the additional information that we can provide to... I feel with the additional information that we can provide to prove to the city, they just, they don't have all the elevations that we do. With the preliminary grading plan and preliminary drainage study. And this may be getting more technical, but we put in enough spots to determine the drainage basins flowing in those directions. They're asking for us to provide a little more spot elevations, more contours on those to determine that what we have modeled is correct.
The width of the sidewalk along Knoblock?
Yes.
What width are you going to include in your PUD or is there any?
There's not a lot of room as you go south. There's those two existing apartment complexes, which you can't really see there. So six foot to Eskridge.
It's not a very wide sidewalk to carry a lot of people. And I do realize that south of there it reduces. But south of that location is gonna be OSU's property. And we're planning to put a 12-foot wide sidewalk through that area. So. Is there any way you can put a wider sidewalk on your property with the anticipation that south of there they'll, can widen someday?
We can look at that, yes.
My suggestion is that we have a 10-foot wide sidewalk through that area.
Okay.
I had a question as well, Kelly. I know, living in that general area, that Moore and Brook, you know, I know those streets. People cut across those. My fear is especially the entrance exit onto Moore. Just creating a nightmare on Moore Street. And also where it comes up to Washington, to North Washington. That's a terrible hill there. And it's not, it's not easy to see around at that intersection. It's got a steep upgrade, winter time, it's crazy, the snow or ice on. What would be the possibility of that Moore entrance exit making it an emergency exit only? Where the only people that would, it would be gated, I'm assuming, and the only people that could get in and out would be the fire department or emergency vehicles?
We have, we have taken a look at that. As far as building code and fire safety, as long as the drive stays there and we permanently gate it so that only emergency access has the capability of opening it. As far as that's concerned, that would be fine and up to building code. The traffic study, if the residents can't leave to the north, those people would all primarily go out the intersection. I doubt very few of them will drive all the way through to go out the Bennett Drive. And with that intersection having a level of service as A, it has the excess capacity to handle those residents. So yes, we can gate that.
I think my comfort level would be a lot better if, and what I think we'll hopefully do is, you know, all those residents will go to the signalized intersection. It'll kind of discourage the cut across, if you will, on the smaller streets that are already crowded and have parking issues.
Sure.
I would definitely like to see that happen if it's not gonna be a problem with code and it sounds like code-wise it's okay. And I think it would just encourage more traffic onto the arterials that can handle it.
We can add that.
Thank you.
Is there a way to just make that a form? Because exiting out there and going to Boomer, not Bennett, but Boomer, I said Bennett, is clean. And I love the high capacity of folks near major arteries situation. It's a good, it's where it needs to be. And it was very, it felt very safe at a traffic incline, very wide and visible unlike the grade over on the other side. Is there a way to just make them jump a six-foot curb?
They'll do it.
Yeah.
Well, I know they will.
If it's not gated, they'll use it and go either direction.
There isn't a way to just kind of make your own, I'm not, I'm speaking, I'm not in city development at this level, so to speak, to.
I, the cleanest?
I would think there would be easy to just put a big brightly yellow painted thing here that fire or whatever would still have access to, but.
Even the new Aldi's site, it has a ride-in only. It's got one of those center triangular shaped medians in the drive where you're only supposed to go certain directions. Even today, I saw people going in it the wrong way.
I didn't mean to do that though. It's a new place. Walgreens has one of those and people do it all the time.
Yeah. Saw Rick there the other day, someone doing that very thing.
Kelly, has there been any discussion of gating it only? In other words, the entrance only is out there?
I'm sorry.
At the end of the parking lot at the north end. At the east end of that parking lot, the entrance is there. So then they would have to drive onto Boomer and circle back onto Moore.
It's too.
That would be.
Probably too close to that other intersection.
Well, I know, but there's gotta be a simple solution to this that would make that.
Solution is they put a crash gate for emergency vehicles only and not allow the public to get in and out, in my opinion.
I'll be honest, I've lived here forever and I drove Moore last night for the first time coming out onto Washington. And I had the same thought, that is so steep. And when you look to the left, you have to really creep out there to see around whatever it is down the way, shrubs or something. But it's really hard to see. And I would think if you add a significant amount of traffic onto Moore, there're gonna be a lot of accidents at that intersection.
That's my concern.
That's my concern.
It's 35 mile an hour speed limit. Some of our folks have a tendency to go a little over the speed limit sometimes. So, you know, people are traveling between 35 and 45 miles an hour. And it is a very blind intersection. It's a concern of mine.
Any more questions for Kelly? All right.
If any questions come out, come up throughout the night, I can come back and answer them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
Larry Brown, Sea Star Real Estate, 112 West Hall of Fame, here on behalf of the developer. It's great to have a great engineer that does everything up front. You don't have to stand up here and talk a lot, which I know each and every one of you appreciates very much. Just a real quick couple of responses concerning the 803 property. We've actually had two discussions with that property owner or representatives of that property owner. And I don't really want to go into a lot of detail, but there is some ongoing dialogue about how we might resolve and mitigate any impact that this project will have on that property. So we're in discussions with representative of the property owner. Concerning the September 5th deadline, Commissioner McEwen, that was one of the questions I asked Kelly this morning on that drainage study. Again, she feels confident we'll be in a position of moving this forward and having information to city staff for that September 5th meeting. But I think I feel comfortable in stating, and representative of the developer is here, that if we're not able to get that information to city staff by September 5th or cannot answer any questions, I don't think we would be in a position of moving forward at that time. We would probably ask for a short delay, get that information to city staff, get those questions answered, and then come before the city council on the next appropriate meeting. Again, to reiterate what Kelly stated, we think it's a great project. It will remove an existing older apartment complex. Will provide a new, modern, much more visually attractive apartment complex. It will serve the growing population of Oklahoma State University. The density is actually less than half of what would be allowed in the RMI district. It's a less intensive request than the two northern tracks which are currently zoned commercial. We're asking to go to residential zoning, less intensive. And we just think, once again, it's a great project. That north part of campus, the culture is changing. As we've seen, campus continue to move north towards Eskridge now with all the activity that's going on there. We think this is a great opportunity for a project of this type. And I would just, again, ask for your support if there are any questions. I'd be glad to try and answer them for you. And again, Brett is here with Progress Builders, if there are any questions that Kelly and I can't answer.
Any questions for Larry?
Great, I'm sitting down.
Anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Please step forward and state your name and address, please.
Thank you for your time. I'm Robert Williams, I have a home at 819 West Moore. I was glad to hear the concerns that your council already had. My concerns are the same, is that that's, we bought that property about three years ago. I didn't really realize that that was the first through street there for about three blocks. So there's just traffic just nonstop up and down through there. I would hate to see us not to be able to park, those houses are older homes. So somebody had mentioned about not parking on the street. Well, you know, we've got three cars, I mean, there's really no room to park there. We'd be parking in the yard, which I don't think that's acceptable to anybody. I like the thing with emergency entrance only, I'm fine with that. I'm not against this project at all, and I think it's a good project. I mean, anytime we make progress like this, I think it's good. So my question would be only the part about rezoning that right off of Boomer. If we had, I would be against rezoning that to residential if there was gonna be an opening on Moore where there's more traffic. In my opinion, if there's 625 cars, which that's possible, maybe not, many of them will be going to the west side of campus. If that was me, I'd take the first street right there on Moore, boom, boom. I don't care if I had to zigzag, I'm sure my son and daughter wouldn't either. Two zigs and a zag would be fine with them. But I think that's dangerous as far as that goes. I don't really have anything else to say, just that I would be against that and those are the reasons for that. I thought this would be a good place to express my opinion. You have any questions for me while I'll be there?
Any questions?
Thanks for coming out.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah.
Linda McEwen, 823.
Can you see it in the microphone?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Linda McEwen, 823 West Moore. And my big concern is the flooding in that area. Your prints were very conservative. My property is right there at the curve on Moore, so it cuts across my property anytime that it floods. So my biggest concern is how much they're going to, they're taking out all that green area and adding parking. So I don't know. I've asked questions on this holding tank, but I'm not sure if it's gonna hold enough. And that's my biggest concern. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis White, 716 West Bennett. The house I live in right now used to be a rent house. So I was able to get enough money working at OSU to buy it. So I bought it, I've lived there a long time. I've been through two floods, so I know what happens in that neighborhood. I know they showed the graph and about where the creek is. Well, the water jumps Bennett, goes down, goes back west. The street west of us turns into a mega river. I've seen this happen twice. For some reason, the water can't get out of the area quick enough. So it starts backing up all the other houses. And that's when you've seen the streets fill up down below. And that's one of my big concerns, is the flooding. Because I can't understand the hydraulics when this all becomes concrete and we're losing all that grass. You know, the grass will let the water go down slower than a bunch of concrete. And then we fill up the tanks, I know the tanks have to dump further downstream. So if the downstream is full, what's gonna happen upstream? So it starts backing up. So that's one of my big concerns. This is a neighborhood. The complex that we have now takes care of the people, all different kinds of students, all nationalities. Single students, married students. Plus, we just passed our taxes to support that new grade school, which will be finished pretty soon. Now, I've seen tons of people walk their kids to school. Now, they've said that this apartment complex is for students. Why don't we do it for residents of Stillwater? I know it's a great, it's a great looking facility, but it doesn't fit in the neighborhood. If you can see the dads, the single dads, or the single mothers walking their kids to school and the kids skipping, it's pretty cool. So if we're gonna do away with all that and make this all a student complex, I know the rent's gonna be high, they're gonna crank out 30 or 40 million dollars for this project. Why don't they take five or six million and fix the old place up? There's still a lot of life left in there. I just want you to know that you're changing the neighborhood. And I live in it. Thank you.
All right, anyone else that would like to speak in opposition or ask a question? Seeing none? This time I'd ask Tom to come up and give his alternatives.
Okay. Did you have any questions for me before I get started?
Yes, on the traffic study, is this pending or where? What, I didn't, I may have missed it, but are, what is the situation on that? Is there one?
I think the engineer, it hasn't been submitted to the city at this point, as the rest of the.
Can I ask Kelly something?
I have received the preliminary results from it. I was kind of waiting to see what came out of tonight's meeting to see if we needed to make some minor amendments to it before I submit it to the city. And that is only required to be done before the actual development plan. So not before the city council sees the preliminary plat, or preliminary PUD.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, we can accept staff findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed preliminary PUD as presented. We can find that additional information and/or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation. So either continue the consideration to a certain date or table a consideration until further information is available. As we've discussed, staff was seeking additional information on the floodplain and maybe the traffic to fully evaluate the impacts of the PUD. Or we can find that the PUD is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity and recommend that the city council deny the preliminary PUD. And I had two other notes on the, I was going to just go ahead and recommend that if, as we were talking about the sidewalk connection to the, to OSU, toward OSU, I wanted to just once again reiterate that that was not shown on the site plan and is not part of the statement of intent. And so if we do want to make that a requirement of this PUD, we need to actually vote to make that a requirement of the PUD. And also just to clarify on what staff's looking for on the drainage issues. One of the things that's also needed besides some additional information on the grading is the flooding model, it's called HECCRAZ model that would evaluate the impacts of when you do that filling in the floodplain and then take away some dirt in another location as to whether or not that impacts the, any flooding upstream and downstream.
As well as in the area of the development?
Yes. Yes. Any other questions for me?
What is, put the first recommendation up if you can do that in terms of the language. If we want to, this says accept, sign, recommend, we can make modifications. What's the process of doing it? Do we do that first or we do a motion that includes those modifications?
I think you would do a motion that would include...
With the modification.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion?
Well, I mean, I'll start. I do think it's a neat project for Stillwater. I know there's a need for student housing. It is, campus is growing north. It's going that way. I think it'll continue to do that somewhat in the next five to ten years. I think this will, I think this project is close enough to the campus that it will encourage bicycling and walking, hopefully, and then less driving, which is always a problem, not only for the neighborhoods but on campus too, I'm sure. So, you know, I do support the project with the caveats of the potential flooding issue. I think that needs to be looked at very, very thoroughly with whatever staff thinks we need, whether it be models, additional information. I think we have to be very careful. I know that area already has flooding problems. It's prone to that. And the last thing that any of us want to do is make that worse. Would love to be able to help it, but I just think we have to be very, very careful here on this one in particular with the drainage. It's going to be a big deal. And as I said before, I think my other concern was the traffic onto Moore. And if the applicant's willing to let us make that a stipulation that it's emergency entrance only, I think that really helps alleviate a lot of that potential problem on Moore. It'll get everybody over to the stoplight probably where they should be. But, you know, with a few things, I do like your idea on the sidewalk, Mike. I think that's fairly inexpensive and easy to do at this point and hopefully tie into some good things you guys are doing on campus. So, anyway, with that, that's all good to say.
Anybody else?
Sorry. I agree with Dusty on this as well. I definitely understand the flooding concerns. To me, that would be the number one priority is making sure that that was addressed. And I also think, Mr. White, that you would definitely want to contact somebody at the city in the public works area or whatever it's called now that, you know, handles the drainage and makes sure that they're aware, if they are already aware of the issues there. And maybe there's a project that's coming up to help mitigate some of the problems that are there now. Hopefully, you know, if designed properly, this, you know, obviously they're going to ensure that, or have to prove that this doesn't increase the potential for flooding in that area, but it doesn't make it any better, you know. Right now, it does, you can tell, there's a lot of flooding that's occurred there. I do support the crash gate idea because I think the Moore-Washington intersection is, it's not ideal the way it's set up with the grade and the site triangle is not good. So, and I like the sidewalk widening on Knob Lot.
I'll make a motion, and the motion will be accept staff findings and recommend that city council approve the preliminary PUD with the following proposed three changes. The width of sidewalk on Knob Lot be a minimum of ten foot wide. Number two, eliminate any public entrance or exit on Moore Street. And number three, the drainage study must be approved by city staff before it is placed on the city council agenda.
May I make a friendly amendment to that?
You definitely can do that.
Maybe adding also traffic analysis, traffic impact analysis be submitted and approved by the city prior to moving forward to city council.
I don't, I don't concur with that one. I think having that after the PUD is approved is acceptable to me. But if the applicant concurs with that, I don't have a problem with that. But the timing of that, I'm concerned about.
That's a long motion.
Kelly, do you want to...
And maybe I put something on...
We have a motion on the floor, Dusty. Do we need to...
I think the chair without objection, or excuse me. Not my business.
Can we hear discussion about that or do we need to strike the...
We have a question that you're trying to put together and so the question that was posed to the person who made the motion was, could I make a friendly amendment?
But he hasn't accepted the friendly amendment.
He accepted it, so the only way to amend it at this point would be to go ahead and complete the vague motion, look for a second, and then vote on it, and then you can then make the amendment to the motion at that time.
Okay.
I'll just withdraw my friendly amendment. That work?
Then do we have a second on the motion with the amendment?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, plus our votes in a minute. Cindy's got to catch up. She's got beautiful penmanship, though, if you guys can't see it out there.
I can't read a word of it.
I can't either. She types it up nicely, though.
Okay. We have a motion with amendments. I'm Mr. Foukert. And Mr. Merrifield, do you have a second to it? Did I hear that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Please go. The motion passes.
That does pass this evening, seven votes yes. Okay. Moving on to our next item is item number five for our text amendment, PZ 1.3, 1.765 to Chapter 23 Land Development Code by amending Section 23.100 Temporary Access Structures and Uses Within All Districts Other Than Residential and 23.342 Ride-Aways. We, we are going, Mr., he's in on it. He knows.
Staff would like to ask if this item be dismissed. We have received some late information that we need to talk about on this one.
Dismissed or discussed?
Dismissed.
Dismissed. So, we don't need an action on that then, correct?
Yeah, I think we do.
Do we need a vote? Do we need a vote to dismiss? No.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Then our next item, approval of regular meeting minutes summary of July 16th, 2013. Get a chance to review those.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
There was a word, "applicate" as opposed to "applicant" at the bottom of the first page. I finally caught her.
That's your first in two years, Joe. That's good.
And I could, and I'm probably wrong, but now it said "applicate," I believe, instead of "applicant," I believe is what was needed. And I didn't bring my copy of the minutes. Is that correct? Is it bottom paragraph, first page? I better be, I better be right now. No big deal. Is this the same minutes that you put?
Did you read last year's?
Yeah, maybe I'm... Oh, you've got to be kidding me. Damn.
I think that's a right set. I didn't really look.
July 16th? Yeah, July 12th is just the date that the agenda's posted.
I better not vote on this approval of these minutes because I may have read it wrong once.
Cindy's still undefeated.
I thought I had her. Never mind. Excuse me.
Do we have a second on those?
Second.
I'm going chip stain.
Okay.
Ms. Crosby, on your voting block, the very last button will be your stain.
We still have...
Do we have one that has a no choice?
All three of Lori's are lit up.
There it is.
She's a colorful girl.
So, hers, okay. So, Ms. Crosby, you have stain.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Merrifield, just because he couldn't find my do-over.
He wants that on the record.
No, I figured it out. It was in the city manager's deals, which was dismissed. I'll get with you afterwards. I thought I had you.
Okay, this do pass. Next planning commission meeting will be September 3rd, 2013. With that, we would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Shane and I aren't getting along tonight. It's not, okay. We stand adjourned. I say so, isn't it? Thank you.